Good evening. I'd like to call the special meeting to order at 7:01. Tonight, we have Lynn Conway, Fred Beitman, myself, Ben Filbert, Charles Orschock, Cheyenne, and Ryan Deasy as our board. I'm sorry. Is that better? I just got leaned into it. Okay. Do I need to induce everybody? Did everybody hear? And we've been informed by our select woman that once we are in the building, we can take our masks off if you're comfortable being six feet apart. Correct you? You must wear it entering the building, and then it's up to your conscience. Is there a motion on the wonderful minutes that were presented? All those in favor?
Aye.
Host abstaining from Lynn, you are gone. Thank you.
Yeah, first up are the administrative review items. Item 5D, 5D1 is a request for a 90-day extension to record the final plans for approved subdivision TZ2106 SD and GPP 490 Al Harvey Road LLC. This was a subdivision and groundwater protection permit application for a two-lot subdivision at 506 Al Harvey Road, Stonington Assessor's Map 112 Block 3 Lot 2B Zone RR80. This was a subdivision that was approved by the commission back in May. It's had several stipulations that still have to be done prior to recording the final plans. State statutes allow up to two 90-day extensions to file the final plans with the town clerk. They've already been granted one, so this is the second one that they're asking for, which would be up February 23rd next year.
So if this is not moved forward by February, then it just lapses, or we start over?
Right, right.
Has anything been done on that?
It has, I think, you know, the final plans have been modified, but they need more time to, there's easements involved and things like that, that they had to get approved.
You hear a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Item 5D2 21213 ZON Unicorn Project LLC. Zoning permit application for the interior and exterior remodel of the former Friendly's Restaurant Building for a different restaurant, Andiamo, property located at 247 and 251 Green Middle of Mystic. Assessor's Map 171 Block 1 Lot 1 Zone TC80. With this, the applicants are looking to repurpose the former Friendly's Restaurant as a new restaurant. The number of seats won't increase. There's no changes to this site layout that are proposed with the parking lot. The building changes are just repainting. The building eliminating two small dormers, restructuring the cupola, repainting existing materials. And the existing signs will just be the same size. Located in the TC80 tourist commercial zone, there was a special use permit for a restaurant with liquor service granted in 1979. The initial plans were to replace and raise the center of the building to do more intense changes. That triggered an architectural design review board review. So this went to them. They had some comments and wanted more information, but they downscale the plans. So they're really just repainting the building, doing a few small things. And with due to the ARV application, because it doesn't require that anymore. And Mr. Pettis is the engineer. On this, if there were any specific questions?
Keith, have they indicated what the signage changes will be? I know you said the size will be the same, but how about lighting, et cetera?
No changes to that. And I don't think they're internally lit now.
Thank you.
Keith, I think this is for you, maybe for the applicant. And it may not even be a proper question.
...special permit for a restaurant with liquor service was granted in 79. But that was a lot of that. And I'm curious that even though the seating hasn't changed, has the criteria and the regulation changed for required parking?
I'm not sure if the standards changed since 1979, but the special use, the original special use permit is still valid. So if it is non-conforming, are they able to maintain that legally?
Any other questions?
No.
You hear most?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes had it. Thank you.
Item 53 Spruce Meadows LLC zoning permit application to remove the requirement for fencing around the recreation area and approve a proposed 20-by-20 extension of the emergency access drive with a change of material to concrete. Property located at 86-88 South Broad, Pawtucket, Assessor's Map 25 Block 1 Lot 4 Zone LS5. As the second building for Spruce Ridge is nearing completion and will be occupied soon, they're seeking two minor changes here. And the first one is elimination of this fence around a recreation area on the approved plans. The zoning regulations require that a certain amount of land is set aside as a recreation area. The original plans had a line, it showed fenced as required. Our regulations don't require a fenced. A fence would have no purpose since it's surrounding an area that's also grass, and there's a fence right behind it, which is the property line fence. And there's a picture of it in page 12 of the staff report of what it looks like now. We can see an additional fence wouldn't make sense there. The second change is the extension of that eastern emergency access drive by 20 feet. This is something that the fire district is requiring so they can get their trucks there in case of an emergency. And due to supply chain issues, they're requesting that it be concrete rather than grass pavers. There's grass pavers already there for what was built, but they're asking that it be concrete for the last 20 feet. Because it's elevated from the road, you really won't see the change from the road unless you're up there.
Do we have any concern that I didn't keep the kids out of the parking lot to have a fence around the recreation area? It may not be required, but...
You know, the owners don't feel it's necessary there. I don't know if anyone's here to work this application. And it really wasn't, approved plans, it really wasn't presented in that way or really discussed as a fenced area. It just said "as required" on the plan.
Sort of the same question. You know, for very young children, it might be a safety issue. It's a big parking lot, it's not a small parking lot. And although there's no recreational equipment or anything outside there, and in some ways, I guess it would restrict the use of the property, I do have that minor concern that for extremely young children that might be out there, there may be safety issues associated with it.
Would you think that insurance would be required? So the ads required might be required to...
Insurance policy would require them to have a fence. It might lower their cost, but it could be required by the policy.
What would you think, like a three-foot fence?
Well, it seems to me, if it's not required, you can hardly turn it down. But it seems to me that we want to encourage the landlord to find some way to keep the two-year-olds out from under the wheels of SDBs, you know what I mean? They move pretty fast. I guess I think we proved the change, but I encourage them to think about a new security sometime.
Along the parking lot?
Yeah.
Connecting to the white fence in back?
I think that would be, it's a huge fence in back, that's not good. I would rather lose it.
Yeah. I like that.
Along the parking lots?
Yeah. Yeah, something that would be integrated into the perimeter fence.
The hedge or something. And that's within our parameters, Keith? We can go ahead and ask for a...
Yeah, I think especially if the recommendation, you know, makes sense to have your concern on record there.
It's subject to staff discretion under review of laws.
Yeah, and you know, a fence like that isn't something we really would even have a permit for.
We have a gate in the corner, two gates, at least more.
Yeah, and then we need the building perfect for it, and it's not small.
So what's the summary? The summary is that we're going to recommend through a letter, but we're not going to ensure or it's up to the landlord?
Yeah, it would just be a stipulation that encourages them to look at it or consider it.
Yeah, I'd say parallel to the parking lot, sidewalk there, at least three feet high. And it does not have to connect up to the white fence, is that what we're saying? It could be, something would be an open...
Just an recreational, yeah. We're ready to walk in, keep the walk, dance by a hundred meters. You know, just a thought. I mean, I don't think we can turn it down, but I think we ought to suggest it. Think about it. Not think of the kid.
Have you composed a citation?
The commission encourages a, and it's for small children. Fence for small children on the parking lot.
Maybe something to the effect of, "The commission encourages a barrier between..."
It could be landscape.
"...open space in the parking lot." Keeping in mind, keeping in mind the current use for, you know, not so bad.
Good idea. Okay. Does this need to have a motion as?
Check it.
So a stipulation? Recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Good. Thank you. And item 6A Old Business, that's the coastal area management application on Lindberg Road, I recommend tackling that in the next minutes. And that is, that is it for the public hearing.
And thank you, Keith. So for tonight's public hearing, it's the same Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbert, Fred Beitman, and Lynn Conway. Do we have a sign-up sheet at the front door, Keith?
Yeah, at the table back there.
There'll be a sign-up sheet at the front door. The process will be, is the applicant will present their format, what they intend to do. Then we'll hear from anybody who's in favor of it, from those who are opposed, general comments, and then plays a rebuttal by the applicant. The board will ask questions, close the hearing, and go to a vote. We have to read the small papers.
Okay. Pursuant to the general statute of the state of Connecticut, revision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District Office, 40 Field Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut, on Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, at 7:00 PM on the following application. First application is TZ2123SUP Coastal Masonic Temple Corporation of Connecticut, Inc. Special use permit application for a 2014 square foot addition to the Masonic Temple building with its own views, parking, landscaping, and drainage. Property located at 6 through 7 Pequot Trails, Stonington, Assessor's Map 72 Block 1 Lot 11 Zone RR80.
For the record, Sergio Terenzia with Terenzia and Associates, office is located at 99 Mechanic Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut. I'm here this evening on behalf of Coastal Masonic Lodge for their proposed addition and special use permit. With me this evening, who also prepared some of the plans and exhibits that you will see this evening, is Rebecca Nolan, landscape architect, and Julia Leem, art project architect, as well as Ted Ladwig, counsel for the applicant. The plans and the applications before you this evening was prepared by my office under my responsible charge, and I am a licensed registered professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. Just to orient you, I'm going to start with GIS map, which I can pull your attention to the screen. As mentioned by your chair and in the application, this property is located at 673 Pequot Trail, map 72 Block 1 Lot 11. I'll highlight that for you right there. And property owned by the Coastal Masonic Temple Corporation. Just to give you some orientation, it's on the south side of Pequot Trail. Property to the south is relatively undeveloped. Property of, I believe it's Sergio Frankie, off of Sergio Frankie Drive, Eva Frankie, wife of my late namesake, Sergio Frankie. It's funded by residential property to the west. A large property that I referenced to the south, the residential kind of farm property, as well as to the east. And it is the residential farm, kind of farm property also to the north. So relatively rural area. And our subject parcel being that of the Coastal Masonic Temple with the single building located on it. So from here, I'm going to pull up the existing condition survey that was actually not prepared by my office, prepared by Bob Sanner. But just to orient you, on the site here, here's the property. There is a wetland, freshwater wetland on the southern portion of the rear of the property. The structure, the existing structure, as you can see from Pequot Trail, I'm sure you've driven by numerous times. There's a gravel parking lot to the north with two curb cuts, generally for entrance and exit, but both of them are wide enough for to be used as inlet and outlet. There's a relatively cleared field kind of area to the east on the property. And to the south, there is an existing septic system, which was actually relatively recently approved and installed and conformed for the lodge. There's also an existing well in the front of the property. However, they have, this is the, if I can zoom in here, the existing well in the front of the property, which is going to be abandoned part of this project. And actually, the new well is in the process of being, I believe it's been tested, and they're in the process of connecting it to the lodge and abandoning the other well. So the reason we're here in front of you this evening, pull up my site plan. For a special use permit for an addition to the building, as well as some associated improvements, including stormwater. As I mentioned, a new well. Septic will remain substantially the same. New parking area, configuration, and other items like dumpster pad, things to make it, to put the property in better conformance with the use that we're proposing. So as is indicated, the proposed addition, you can see on the east side of the building, excuse me, not too far there, is about 2,000 square foot in footprint. Julia and Rebecca will go through much more of the more aesthetically pleasing aspects of the design, and I'll give you a little bit of a technical background. As part of the project, we are formalizing some of the parking in the front, some ADA spaces. And a big, one of the more significant reasons for this addition is currently all of the space that is used for informal, kind of I guess recreational meeting space is downstairs in the basement of the current facility, the existing building on the left side here. It has, it doesn't have any, it does not have compliant ADA access. Some of the aging members have to come around and use the side door, which is not ideal, given it's all gravel and it's all gravel parking surfaces. There's also a kitchen on the lower level. So the formal meeting space is at ground level as you come from the front. And then they meet informally and share meals together, typically downstairs, and have the kitchen to bring in food to keep it warm. And mostly, everything is catered here. They don't prepare meals in this facility. So as such, they wanted to have a better ADA compliant flow between the two spaces all on one level. So that's what this addition is also going to provide. There'll be main level access between the addition, but also you'll bring your attention, there's an ADA ramp leading right from the ADA spaces up across the front of the building, around to the side, and into the covered porch area. You'll see with the building plans, you'll see how that flows and how that works and translates to the outside to the inside. There's also another entrance on the side here with sidewalk connecting it to, so that this parking on the side here will provide much better access into that space. So for when they don't have formal meetings or they're using this building for, other than their own use, because we are permitting this as a community, excuse me, as a community center, that there's other folks that are the organizations that will be using it. And there's actually a letter that was submitted as part of the application which identifies those organizations which the Coastal Masonic Lodge allows to use the space. They're very civic-minded and oriented group, much similar to a lottery. So it's very important that they allow, that the space is accommodating to other community organizations. So as I noted, there'll be paved parking in the front. We've rearranged the parking on the site to be a little bit more formal. The parking will line up in front of the addition, and you'll see with the elevations why that makes sense. But mainly, we wanted to preserve the front of this building because although this isn't on a historic register, the building has a lot of history. I'm sure many people have driven by it and seen it. And you'll see in the photos, there's signage in the front of the building, and we wanted to maintain the integrity of that building with the addition and didn't lose it. And then Julia will go into that a little bit more. So there's formal paved parking in the front. We've got less formal parking, crush zones, parking around the sides of the building. Typically, there's about 25 to 30 members on any given meeting that meet on a regular basis once a month. So as far as the parking goes, excuse me, sorry about that. We anticipate most of the folks are going to park in the front and use these spaces over here. You've got about 22 spaces on the side, another six in the front. And then for larger events and to accommodate, you know, the more periodic and less frequent events, is the overflow parking spaces. We have another 10 on the side here, and then some overflow parking in the front, which will remain. Just a, we'll probably do that in, not a formal gravel, it'll be some kind of grass paved system where it'll still be stabilized, but less formal and still be part of the landscape. And Rebecca will go into that a little bit more. As far as the stormwater management goes, these plans have been reviewed by the town engineer. We are providing a stormwater detention basin in the rear of the property before it discharges to the wetland. We're providing catch basins in the driveway that are offline with deep sumps. Town engineer, we've met, we've been meeting periodically. He is very much attuned to low-impact development technologies and trying to handle first flush of runoff and take care of pollutants and sediments prior to getting to wetlands. So we heeded his advisement and put a little bit more robust system in, which was approved, which was consented by him, as well as we also obtained a wetlands permit for this design. We need all the zoning requirements, or no zoning relief is needed. Dumpster pad with enclosure, as I mentioned, the new well. And we have submitted to Edelweiss Health District for a suitability determination on the existing system. It's important to note that this addition is not to accommodate additional membership. This is to accommodate the existing membership. The masons aren't looking, and you know, in drastically increasing the membership by increasing the space, it's really to be more accommodating. The space in the basement will actually be turned into storage, and the kitchen will be abandoned. The new space will be more accommodating, better ADA access and flow for them in between spaces. And it will have a kitchen as well, but mostly for keeping food of, you know, their meals are pretty much catered. They don't go there and have, no one's really cooking there. So they'll bring food in, just need a place to warm it, plate it, and put it out in the space. There's no flood considerations on this property. Pretty much all the standard maintenance will be taking place. We have operational maintenance plans for the stormwater, for the parking lot, things like snow removal, fertilizer use, pretty much all standard. No hazardous materials on the site. Nothing that you wouldn't see in a regular household. With that, unless there's any... Um, with that, unless there's any, uh, questions for me, um, we can, uh, go through the rest of the presentations, whatever pleases the commission.
I have a couple of questions. Did you indicate that there'd be no increased use of this facility beyond what it is currently used for? It's not gonna be rented out for other uses and that, what do you mean?
It's currently rented out to, no, I should say, I don't know if they do rentals per se, but they let other organizations use the facility now. And it would accommodate the same capacity of their periodic meetings and then, uh, allowing other, uh, you think so?
But no, uh, thought that the usage of the property will be increased in a, in significant way?
No.
Yeah, you indicated that that's likely, considering whether the system is adequate for?
Yeah, yeah, then in correspondence with the Sanitarian, um, and that we have a, uh, application pending for, uh, suitability of, of the system, but considering there's no changes to the use, we've issued a letter to them identifying that, um, we're just waiting for them to, uh, issue a, uh, issue that permit and to be happy to make a conditional upon, uh, the.
You haven't added bathrooms then?
I'm sorry?
You haven't added bathrooms?
No, there's, uh, well, the addition does have bathrooms, correct, yeah, but I don't, uh, yes, so we, we are adding, yes, there will be additional bathrooms, yep.
I, I don't see, uh, a light plan. Is there a plan to add lights to the parking lot at all?
I don't know if we submitted a lighting plan or if it was, wait, Rebecca, check that.
There, there aren't any lights now. I, I don't know if they're required, uh, because you're changing the parking lot, um, but I'm, I'm not seeing a plan as part of this dimension.
I don't believe, I know the requirement, we requested. I don't see that one was, uh, submitted with the application. Um, I do know that the, the building will be, there'll be lights on the building, um, and, uh, given the size of the parking lot, that may be adequate for the parking, but it may require additional lights.
So, uh, I'm just gonna say that this is a pretty dark area of Tequahut Trail, and so the lighting probably has more of an impact than the change in the building itself from, you'll be passed by neighbors, et cetera. So I think that lighting plan is very important. Um, as to what the requirement is, maybe that's something I keep, keep a library on.
I don't see an application. What was said about it here? But, I mean, could it be something addressing this if we lost you there? Lighting plans, maybe you ought to say, maybe you want to in that direction?
We're at a remote location. I don't think there'll be any issues with, uh, light shed onto adjacent properties. Uh, typically, we have a lighting plan that shows, uh, photometrics, uh, which identify that all lighting will all be docked down, um, uh, dark sky compliant, all full cutoff, and only necessary for the safety of the patrons. So if, it pleases the commission to, uh, to condition it upon that, and they will, uh, feel confident in staff to approve it as such, we would be open to that.
And you're not thinking of any kind of spotlights or anything like that? It's, it's more just your down, down-facing lighting for safety?
Yeah, I mean, most, most of the meetings take, uh, take place in the afternoon and evening, so it's just enough for safety in the parking lot.
And, uh, would there be hours to that?
Um, as far as the hours of the.
Lighting?
Of the lighting? Oh, we could, yeah, typically, we'll either put them on a timer or, um, uh, there's, there was, uh, there was photovoltaic sensors, so they go off, um, you know, at dusk.
But they would be on all night?
Uh, some, I don't, I'm trying to recall now, if you drive by, if there's a, if there is ever a light on, but we could, um, provision if that, if that would happen in the, uh, maybe. Do you have any questions, uh, or we can continue on to this?
One?
Just one, and I think I know the answer, but the, uh, existing well is being moved west of it, uh, out of, out of the way of construction. I, I presume there's a water quality issue to be addressed in it?
Um, the, uh, when you say the existing well, the well that's currently, yeah, I'll try, I'll try to figure.
It's, it's, the well is located at the northeast corner of the existing building.
No, there's, I don't believe there's any issue with it, but it, um, it does not conform with the location of a septic system.
Okay, so it's a standoff distance for the, 'cause it doesn't look like the proposed one is any further away than the existing?
There should be a separation on that well. Um, typically, it's, I believe.
Seventy-five feet?
Seventy-five, yeah.
It looks like it's seventy-five feet, but the existing one was too.
We're putting in, uh, I, I should note this, that, uh, we did have a proposed grease trap put, put in, and there's a building store that we're adding there, so it is too close to those components.
Okay, got it, that, that makes sense. And you said that they did have a water quality test, uh, I don't let that into that.
Yes, um, Edgway won't approve the suitability without this, the, uh, the, the new well, uh, testing. And I just, I believe, I just got those a day or two ago, um, the testing results in the past.
Thank you. No, no further questions.
Fine, thank you, Julia.
Thank you. Um, I don't know who's coming up next for the review, Rebecca and Julia, we haven't decided yet. Okay.
Okay.
They're package deal.
All right, good evening. Um, Rebecca Nolan, Lansky Barstek, for the record. Um, Julia and I are gonna be going through this slideshow, uh, together, so each time that we come in and out, we'll just spare names for the record, um, so you guys can keep track. Um, I'm gonna just start by saying that we put together this presentation for, um, the Architecture Review Board. It was, um, the second time that this project went to Architecture Review Board. Um, and the purpose of, of going back to them was to address some of their concerns, um, that were related to the parking layout and some of the, um, the traffic circulation coming in and out, um, as well as some landscaping, um, and screening issues that hadn't been addressed in the original plan. So I believe this is the first time, um, you're seeing this presentation. Um, so I'll turn it over to Julia for now, and then we'll, we'll go back and forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Julia Leeming, um, the architect on the project. And on this, on this board, what's important, you, you already have the context and search of the location, um, but this is the existing building, which was built in 1933, and as Sergio said, um, it's a modest building, but there's something iconic and historic and, um, special about it. And I think the, the initial design, which none of us were involved in, didn't respect the existing building, I think, as much as the Architectural Design Review Board had hoped, and certainly as much as, as we are trying to do now. Um, so the, the one thing I'll note here, is if you look at the front door, so this is the existing entrance, um, does not have any kind of coverage from the elements. And the, the first floor elevation is actually up here, so it's a split level. So as soon as you enter the building, you have to go up a series of stairs. So it is not in any way accessible to a person with any kind of mobility issues. And that was, um, really the impetus for the addition to the building. And the only other thing I'll note is that this existing sign, you'll see, we've, we've, um, repurposed it for the second entrance to, um, to the addition, or the second entrance to the building to the addition. And the rest of the signage, we are hoping to, um, reuse. And this is the existing sign right now on Tequahut Trail. Um, just a few couple notes about materials. It's existing red cedar shingles, um, and an exposed concrete foundation, very straightforward in its, its material palette. And then there are these, um, the corner boards are pressed with a white trim on the side.
Thank you, Julia. Rebecca Nolan. Um, Sergio's gone through most of this plan. I just wanted to make note that, um, there are some trees on the property that we would like to preserve, um, in the, in the front. There's some evergreen trees, uh, that we'd be leaving. There's also some rock outcroppings, um, and that's why the parking configuration, uh, for overflow parking is the way, um, it is to kind of accommodate those, uh, existing, um, geological features. Um, you can see that the, the tree line along the eastern side, um, we're trying to really hold that tree line as much as possible, um, so that, you know, we're, we're really proposing the parking area to go where the open lawn space is, um, you know, staying out of the wetland area. And then, um, just providing, um, you know, there's, there's not really an existing buffer along either one of the, um, the side, side setbacks. So along the east and the west side, um, we're proposing adding, um, some significant buffer there. Um, this is the proposed site plan, um, also what you saw from Sergio, just with, um, maybe a little bit more color, um, callouts. Um, you can see what I'm, I'm speaking about in the, uh, upper right-hand corner of the screen, where there's some rock outcroppings. We have three overflow parking spaces in that area. Um, we're proposing a dumpster that can be easily picked up, um, and, uh, you know, close enough to the building. Um, the parking area, 22 spaces, that would be the area that Sergio mentioned would be in, um, crushed stone, with the main parking area, um, along the frontage, um, being, um, the paved area. Um, 20-foot setbacks on, um, for the side yards for planting. So we're showing, you know, putting in some trees, uh, buffer trees at, uh, six feet height, um, at time of, um, insulation. We're also noting that there's already, um, some utility poles in that area, so, you know, plants that can accommodate, um, you know, staying away from existing wires. Um, we're also, uh, observing the septic system that, uh, has just gone in, so we're trying to keep any new plantings and any real, uh, construction work out of that area. Um, just another note on the trees that you see surrounding the new parking area with 22 spaces. Those are 40 feet on center. Um, they're selected from the, um, from your plant list, uh, that Sergio provides. Um, and there is, as Sergio pointed out, a propane tank that's, uh, towards the bottom of that parking area. Um, it really is, there's not much to buffer there. It's gonna be a very small, um, tank that's sticking up, so we've, we've provided a little bit of screening there, just from the parking lot. Um, and then really around the building, it's just meant to be, um, more maintenance planting. Um, I can jump to the, um, architecture really quick, and we can go back. I have a planting plan with a little bit more detail coming up.
Thank you, Rebecca. So back to Julia. Um, so this is the floor plan for the existing building, which is right here, and then the addition to the side. So now we've, we've rotated 180 degrees from the drawings that we were looking at, um, before. And as I said, this is the existing front door, um, and as you can see, there's a flight of stairs sort of immediately in front of you, which is how people currently get into the meeting room. The only change to the existing building is to add a covered portico on the outside of the building so that, um, if people are exiting the building from this existing door, there's at least somewhere where you can stand and wait for a car to come get you, or just not be dumped into the elements immediately. Um, the, the addition tries to respect to the front gable end of the existing building and frames in on the eastern side of the building, and I'll show you the roof plan. But it's a very simple gable roof, so it's just, it's essentially deferential to that existing building form and, um, and frames into the side of it perpendicular to the existing building. Uh, one thing that we really like about, um, about this approach is that the, the parking area, uh, one of the, the first comments from the Architectural Design Review Board on the first design was that it placed a lot of parking right in, in between Tequahut Trail and the building and created this, this sort of sea of parking between the road and the existing building, which, which didn't feel like the right approach. So in Rebecca and Sergio's appro, approach, the parking is on the eastern side of the existed, existing building in addition. And by turning the addition, we're able to have the stairs off of the eastern parking area so that people who are coming from that parking state, parking lot, and people who might be using the ramp to come in, are all coming through the same front door, which I think is really important when you're, when you're designing buildings for people. Um, it's nice that everyone uses the same front door, whether you're in a wheelchair with a walker or making it up on your own. Um, and then the layout of the, of the dining room is very straightforward. It's just an open dining space that accommodates 74 seats, um, a men's room and a women's room, each with, with three, um, either toilets or urinals and, and toilets. And then, as Sergio said, a kitchen that is primarily a heating space and a plating space, not a food prep space. Um, and then a front porch on the front that the ramp accesses. Uh, the, um, the, the Masonic group did not want to make a larger opening between the addition and the existing meeting room, so we are, there's one three-foot door that goes from the dining room into this waiting area and then into the existing meeting room. Um, and that is the only connection between the addition and the existing meeting room. And as Sergio said, the basement, um, space is being abandoned for all, all things but storage. This is the roof plan, so this is very quick, but, um, all of the overhangs on the existing building, the side overhangs are 20 inches, the front and rear overhangs are six inches. We are, we are, um, being true to those on the existing, uh, on the addition as well. 20 inches on the back, six inches, six inches on the front. We enlarge it on the street side so that the ramp is covered, so that when people are using the ramp to come into the building, they are also protected from the elements. And then this is the gable roof that I was mentioning, framing into the existing gable roof. And then there's a slightly, uh, quote, uh, lower pitch on the, over the bathrooms and the kitchen. These are, um, the east and the north exterior elevations. So the north elevation, this is the existing building, um, and this is the portico that we're adding, and otherwise, it remains unchanged. Um, the idea behind the, the, the north elevation of the addition is that it really steps back from the existing building and, um, picks up on the window, um, pattern. Window, the, the window dimension is identical, but, um, that it really, it highlights, it lets that front existing elevation, um, be highlighted against the, the addition as it steps back. And then the east elevation of the addition takes its cues directly from that existing north elevation, so it's very much a little brother to the original, um, front elevation. And, uh, this is where the, the roof pitch breaks between the dining room and the kitchen and bathrooms so that we again, keep, pick up on that gable proportion from the existing building. Um, this is the side elevation of the, uh, the building, which is totally unchanged, and then the rear elevation, um, with just access to the basement space. Um, in terms of materials, all of the building materials are getting replaced, so there'll be asphalt shingle roofing across the entire roof, certain feed vinyl, um, shingles that will hopefully match existing red cedar as much as possible, and then an exposed concrete foundation like the original. And I'll get it back to Rebecca.
Rebecca Nolan, um, so I think this, this drawing is really just to give you guys an idea of what the, the top, uh, view would be looking from the street, um, oh, I'm sorry, the, the top view would be looking from the new parking lot, um. The top view would be looking from the new parking lot. And so you can see that the idea is that you almost, it almost mimics the other side of the building. So we're really trying to connect those two with the new entry. And then the bottom elevation is just showing a view from the street. So we're looking at very simplified plantings. The masons were really looking for something more maintenance. We wanted to clean up around the building a little bit with some foundation plantings, mostly just to kind of hold the soil in and kind of decorate the front of the ramp that you would see when you're pulling in. But the majority of this property is remaining natural. So the idea is that we're leaving as much of the natural vegetation as possible. And you can see that in this rendering. That's mainly what this is meant to show. I'm going to keep going to the planting plan. I think there might be some more specific questions. But right now, you know, the street trees that we selected along the parking lot are off of the street tree list or the parking lot list from town Sturington. They're oak trees. There's a couple of, you know, flowering trees towards the back just to kind of clean up the edges of woodland. Most of the woodland right now is, the edge is quite filled with invasive. Part of that is from the septic construction and, you know, some of the other work that's been happening back there. So we imagine that we'll need to clean up that area a little bit more. We're proposing a seed mix in the detention basin area. So you'll see that on the plans. It's a deer resistant mix. All natural should be mowed twice a year, that type of thing. And then, as I mentioned before, the buffering along the east and west sides, well, it's really the east and the north side of this property. You'll see the evergreen trees going in at six feet at time of installation. And then along the front, there is a requirement for a buffer along the frontage. It's a 10-foot buffer. We tried to keep these trees and shrubs fairly well. There's an existing sign in that area that the masons would really like to preserve. So that's kind of the proposal. And then just, as I mentioned, cleaning up around the edge of the woodland area. There's a general palette of some of the plants you might see. Most of them are wetland plants as well. So many of these are also in the seed mix that we specified in the basin. And I'm happy to answer more questions about plants. I'm going to go to the last slide here, thank you, and turn it over to Julia.
Last, very quickly, these are the certainty shingles. They come in two colors, natural blend or cedar blend. And I think the masons will probably try to match either of these as closely to the red cedar as possible. The bottom is just an example of what the railing on the ramp might look like. And the, we had proposed that on the addition, the foundation wall that is exposed to Pequot Trail and the eastern parking lot be clad in stone. But in the architectural design review board, one of the comments was, the existing building has exposed concrete. Why, you know, why add a material that isn't already on your precedent? So I think we are happy to leave it off unless there's interest in putting a stone on. I think because they're the masons, they do have a mason on as one of their members, and that was where the idea came from. But it was a comment that the architectural design review board didn't think was necessary. So that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
I do have a quick question. Is where does the crushed stone stop and start with the pavement? I couldn't find it on any drawings. Is it delineated somewhere? I think I need new glasses, too. Yeah, but I thought I heard. That's the heavy sound. That's the, okay. Got it.
There's a line.
That'll be crushed down to the sound.
Yep.
Okay.
And then I believe it's the same delineation, more or less, over, here we actually have a trench drain to pick up the pavement before it hits the slope, because the slope is relatively steep, so we don't want water cascading down it and running out.
Perfect, thank you.
I have another question.
Yeah, there you go.
We talked about the propane tank in the bathroom parking lot. Is that a buried tank or on purpose?
So that's going to be a buried tank. And I did still have to mention that we coordinated with the fire marshal. The only comment he had on these plans was to make sure that we included some bollard protection or otherwise something to block any cars from hitting that valve, but it will be a buried tank.
Okay, that was the follow-up question. All right, thank you.
So I have a question having to do with the dumpster.
Okay.
And then I look at the planting site plan. Are the plants between the dumpster and the parking lot versus the dumpster and Pequot Trail?
Rebecca Nolan. So the plants that you see just south of the dumpster, those are meant to just kind of block it from the parking lot, so just doing some minor screening. The, to the very north of the dumpster is a pretty heavily wooded area. I probably should have mentioned that, that along the entire front edge of Pequot Trail, there's native trees, large mature trees. And so we didn't feel that we needed to add any additional buffer in that area. And so that's the, that's kind of what's going to be screening it from Pequot Trail. If you drive by now, you'll notice there's, it looks like a big, it's like a storage unit kind of tucked behind there. That's around the area where that dumpster will be. So it's kind of tucked in the back to be out of sight as much as possible.
And then finally, the ramp on the side of the building. So you've got inkberry going all along that ramp. Do you foresee the inkberry actually covering the railing, the height of the inkberry?
Yeah, it's a good question. I believe that the plant we specified was the shamrock species, so it's really only supposed to get up to 24 inches max. So you would still see some of the, you would still see some of the exposed concrete on the ramp, which is, I think, what we were talking to the masons about a bit, was the near possibility along the foundation. But all the plants along the frontage are meant to be as small as possible, so between 24 to 36-inch height max.
Right. So you would see those, whatever it turns out to be, foundations. And really, you would see all of the railing, the entire length, even though it's correct?
Correct, yep.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you. Are there any, anybody want to speak in favor of this proposal? Okay.
I believe, my name is Carleen Donnarumma. I believe we have regulations that say the dumpsters should be enclosed. And I can't tell from where I'm sitting, I'm not seeing any of the other plants, if that one is enclosed or not.
If you'd like to respond to that, please.
Sure. The short answer is that it is enclosed. There's a note to that effect, but I believe our detail, Rebecca, do you have it on your plan or is it on? Never mind. We usually have dumpster enclosure detail. There it is.
Oh, so these friends did.
Yeah, your regulations require it. We have a typical detail. I'm not sure what this one calls out, but white cedar board.
Like a stock weight fence, right?
Yeah. It's something that can't be seen through.
Right. Thank you. Any other general comments or opposition? Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Just, I have this question perhaps for Keith, taking up on this one about lighting. I mean, I plan to vote in favor of this application, but I wonder if you did ask the applicant to come back and go through the lighting plan of this. Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, that is something you could do, where you could stipulate that the lighting plan comes back to you for review. It could be under the administrative review prior to them getting a zoning permit to construct it.
Yeah. That will be it?
Yeah.
Good idea.
Good idea.
Great.
No further questions.
Keith, do you have a...
Well, basically, the application conforms to the RRE, zoning district. It's been committed as a community center, which is allowed in that zone. The town engineer's comments were addressed, and he said all his comments were addressed in the last go-around. The application meets the parking requirements regardless of how you look at it. There's no real requirement or standard in zoning for something like this, like a community center or even a place of assembly. But whether you consider it a restaurant, a theater, or a place of worship, which is a three-courses category, it has a lot more than the required parking. It was approved by the Wetlands Commission recently with a couple of routine stipulations, town engineer review, and notifying staff prior to construction. As the applicant said, too, I mean, the building design really did come a long way in maintaining the historic look of the building. And that's sort of a credit to the applicant and to the architectural review board who recommended going in that direction when there was an original proposal by others. Police commissioner reviewed this, didn't find any public safety concerns. And we talked about Ledgley Health District would have to review the final septic plan. As far as the recommended stipulations for this, number one was just filing the final plans prior to getting a zoning permit. Number two was erosion and sedimentation control bond. Number three was the applicant's engineer's verification of drainage installation, standard language we have for that. And there would be a number four, which is that lighting plan should be reviewed by the commission under the administrative review prior to issuance of a zoning permit.
Review and approve.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the application.
I think we've... Do we need to close the meeting?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, surely will the waivers first? There's actually nine waivers requested.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, we would, yeah, we would have to close the hearing.
Maybe withdraw the motion.
I do.
If we hear motion to close the meeting, we can deal with the votes on the waivers.
Motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, go.
Other waivers, no?
What is the, the motion? Will we approve the applicant's written waiver request that's stipulated on page 16 of 27 of the review memorandum from the town planner? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. So move.
Chairman, I'd move we approve the application subject to the four conditions that were just presented by the town planner, three that are stipulated in this memorandum and the fourth being the lighting condition of the plans come back to the commission for review and approval prior to mission success.
There you go. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you.
Good-looking building, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right on. I know. I know, I know. Yes, please. There's a lot of fluff before the meeting begins.
Okay. The following application, PZ2124SD and CAM, Oakwood Ave LLC, subdivision of the coastal area management review application for a three-lot subdivision of a 1.13 acre lot. Property located on Oakwood Ave, Pocatuck, Assessor's Map 5, Block 1, Lot 5, Zone RA15.
Thank you. So, seated tonight, same as before, Steve Teem, Ryan Beazey, Druckstein, myself, Ben Tilbert, Fred Deekman, and Lynn Conway. And the same ground rules still apply, so unless anybody needs to hear that again, take it away.
Good evening. My name's Greg Settis with Settis Engineering, an office at 70 Essex Street in Mr. Connecticut, representing the owner of the property, Oakwood Avenue LLC. And probably most of you recognize this subdivision. We got it approved a couple years ago. Just given COVID and the confusion maybe wrapped around extensions and state statute stuff and so forth, we missed the deadline for filing. So back before you, same exact plan, same exact waiver request, which is the sidewalk. I can go through the three-lot subdivision, a little over an acre parcel. All the parcels meet, which is on the first sheet of your set, meet all the zoning requirements for size, frontage, setbacks, coverage, and so forth. The second sheet actually shows the site development, and I'm going to flip over. So this shows three generic houses located on each of the lots, one on each lot, simple driveway, retaining walls separating the driveway to the front door. They're all very similar. We also have the stormwater management system, which is basically underground infiltration on both sides of each lot, which basically, previously, we were able to reduce the 2, the 10, and the 25-year storms. This was reviewed, and the review letter is from the town engineer is in your file. We haven't addressed them, but we didn't address them in time. But we were able to, he wanted the 50- and 100-year storms dealt with, so we did increase the size. They were already, in my opinion, for a single-family home, quite large. However, we had to do a slight increase on all six of the separate infiltration systems in order to store and retain the 50- and 100-year storms. We added a, and I think this was a recommendation from the last meeting, is the trench drain capturing most of the runoff from the driveways and directing it back into the underground infiltration. So I think we did a kind of a, I guess, above and beyond maybe on a single-family home, we're just over an acre. We were under an acre. We wouldn't necessarily have to go to this extent. Probably could accommodate that with some regrading and so forth. But I think given the history of the site, given the history of Oakwood Avenue and some of the issues regarding drainage problems, we chose to go with the town engineer's recommendation, upsize our underground infiltration, and accommodate all of the storms that are in the subdivision regs and technical standards. Again, this is more site-specific than the first sheet, which is the record subdivision, but we, our zoning table, which basically shows that we meet all the requirements of the subdivision regulations. There's a shadow plan on the, on this sheet. There's a shadow plan on the, on this sheet, detail of the underground detention. Let's flip the sheet through three, which is the sediment erosion control, which basically shows anti-tracking pad, each driveway location, and then silk fencing and so forth down along the down gradient. Everything kind of works its way, I guess, towards the south, towards Oakwood Avenue. That's what it does now, it's what it will continue to do. And again, I'm just gonna read, I'm gonna read, after I get through the last sheet, I'll read the planning comments and the town engineer's comments. Again, these are the details, the underground infiltration, driveway details, anti-tracking pads, silk fence, some of the trenching we do have. I'm gonna flip back to the first sheet, we do have a sewer line that's going through our property to the adjacent property to the north. We were able to accommodate that with a little bit of redirection, but an easement on our property that was grant.
So, can you review that, will that be relocated?
Uh, just some support on our property.
And you're putting it all on?
We're getting it to a common property line, so you can see it coming down, we're gonna grab it there, we'll clean out it on our property, and direct it down across and into the main.
So it'll go in between two houses?
In between the two houses.
Right on the, next to a border or?
Well, so it's a twenty-foot easement. There's a couple different theories, some people like the line in the middle of the easement, my preference is off to one side a little bit, so you can pile dirt up on the other side, but if the town engineer, he looked at it, it didn't have any comments, the previous town engineer looked at it, didn't have any comments. So I think Doug Middleton looked at it, didn't have any comments regarding that, so. So I think that's the gist of the application. I'll just, because I think the planning comments and the town engineer's comments made it to the file. Just gonna go, we did add the stipulations from the previous approval to the first sheet, and I know they probably are gonna need to be modified slightly, a couple of them don't make sense anymore, but we'll, I think we can take care of that in the stipulations.
Clean those up.
I'm gonna go through, let's see, the, let's see the planning comments first, and that's from Keith. Dated August thirty-first, through the letter to myself, there's four items, application must include a request for later sidewalk requirement, section five-point-three-five. I think, I don't know if that made it to the, we did send a letter, I have copies with me requesting that, but it's the same, the same request as the last time, to waive the sidewalk requirement, there's not sidewalks in the neighborhood, and I think we concluded last time that that was a valid waiver. Number two, the drainage map shows rain gardens rather than underground infiltration. When we did the original drainage cops, we had rain gardens, I think there's some debate with our, you know, with the commission and maybe some of the neighbors, that that's not maybe the best thing, because they don't get maintained and, you know, so forth.
So we're not going with rain gardens?
We're not going with rain gardens, we're going with infiltration units.
I was about to say, didn't we agree on those?
Yes, we, so we did infiltration, but we did never change the drainage map. So we, we've done it, but we have not submitted it yet, we've agreed to that. Number three, the previous commission approved stipulations that we have on sheet one, which I mentioned, they're most likely gonna be slightly modified, some of them, some of them will remain the same. Number four, and this is just, I think, informational, because we do the recent change in the zoning regs, retaining walls, it can be upwards of five feet now. Within the setback, and we complied with three of those before, so I think we're good on that. Then the town engineer's comments, which is in the letter memo dated nine-nine, we have three comments, I kind of mentioned some of this already, number one is about the stormwater runoff, that we achieved no net increase in stormwater to the right-of-way for all the storms, two through a hundred, which we were able to do. The survey, although we referenced the survey and the record subdivision is signed by a licensed land surveyor, will submit the original land survey that was A two, city A two standards that have all the information. And we also, you know, we have the survey, we have the easement with all the data that he requested on our, on our record subdivision, which is, I think, the appropriate place to put it, not on the original survey. And then we revised a couple notes, actually revised note D on the E N S plan, which just kind of said the zoning enforcement officer needs to make sure all the E N S is in place. And another note, giving the name of the person in charge of maintenance of erosion and sediment control. So, we're in agreement with all those, we've actually addressed them, we just have not submitted them yet because of the fifteen-day requirement for public hearings, some little stuff, so we're in agreement, I think, in fact, those can be stipulated, that we comply with the planner and the town engineer, we're in agreement with that. And unless there's any questions, I'd be happy to turn it over to the public.
Any questions?
So, this is, this is soundly very familiar, the first time I've come in. Can you review the discussion on the sidewalk? So you said that there were no sidewalks in the neighborhood? On either side of the street, there were no sidewalks?
I, at least in this general area, I did not, I mean, I don't think, I think we concluded there was not a connection for the sidewalks. Everything's developed on either side, so it's not gonna get connected ever. I think that's what we concluded.
Thank you.
Right, okay, good. Okay, any comments from the public in favor? Anyone opposed? General comments? I had a feeling you would be saying something, something. Yeah, I know.
For the record, my name is Carleen.
That's it, she dropped the mic.
You're supposed to talk and then do the mic.
I know.
I'll start again. For the record, my name is Carleen Donnarumma, and I live on Oakwood Avenue. In regard to your concern about sidewalks, there are no sidewalks on either side of the street on Oakwood Avenue, and it's been that way for the last fifty-four years of existence here. The town does, however, own a fifty-foot right-of-way, where it's at some future point in time, it's land beyond Oakwood Avenue, at the end of Oakwood Avenue, if ever developed , maybe, so much required, but right now, there are no sidewalks. The neighborhood has no problem with your waiving the sidewalk requirement.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to make observations, comments, and some suggestions regarding this application. The three-lot subdivision on Oakwood Avenue, before you tonight, is presented as a new application, but in essence, it is really a revision of a previous application acted upon on May twenty-sixth, last year, 2020, by this commission. Four of you were on that commission at that time, and you may remember it. It is resubmitted under a new L L C, but it is still the same developer, Pierce Hall. He did not file the plans on the town's land records within the night, the regular ninety-day frame permitted in our regulation, nor was it filed by July twentieth, 2021, this year, when the governor's executive offer, order allowing more time to file expired. So that's why we're here again tonight. This new application addresses one of major concerns for our neighborhood, drainage and replacing the rain gardens with infiltration systems, also known as galleys, and by the way, incorrectly spelled on the plan. I would like to quote from the minutes of the 2020 public hearing, quote, "Mr. Raspen and Mr. Shehan recommended placing rain gardens within underground galleys due to the maintenance concerns, as was already stated tonight. Driveways should also drain into these galleys. Mr. Fetis said that this could be accomplished." So I'm really confused, because tonight, he said that they connect, but I don't see any little lines of the driveway into the, into the, um, the galleys. So, I would think you would want to make sure that those are connected. Okay. So, maybe we can explain why there are no drivers, that, why they're not on the plan. And if they're not, I would ask you tonight to mandate that they, again, be placed on the plan, because our fear is that the water runoff from all the sloped paved driveways will run onto Oakwood Avenue, causing problems, additional problems. An even greater concern is the driveway runoff from lots two and three. Not only will they be, the water runoff be entering the street, but will also be making their way onto the driveways of sixteen and twenty-two Oakwood Avenue, because the driveways of two and three are aligned with the driveways of sixteen Oakwood Avenue and twenty-two Oakwood Avenue. To our way of thinking, your stipulation of a driveway tie-in to the galleys makes a lot of sense, and would take care of assuring no net increase in stormwater to the town's right-of-way and these neighboring properties. While comparing the previous stipulations with the covered proposed stipulations, I wonder why old stipulation number two, regarding the requirement of an auto cab drawing, is omitted. Perhaps that was an oversight in the town planner's report. So I suggest that that requirement of an auto cab drawing be added to the list of recommended stipulations. Another major concern with the previous application was the relocation of the sewer line that currently runs through proposed lot three and serves number twelve, Johnson Street, which is north of it. This issue was brought to the town's attention long before the 2020 public hearing was held on May twenty-sixth, and it is still not resolved. Sorry, the thing just don't work those good anymore. The property owner of twelve Johnson Street could not be here tonight, but in an email to me, he states he is pleased that recommended stipulations number three and four, which pertain to the sewer line, are included. However, he has an ongoing concern with monitoring for compliance and other issues. Similarly, Mr. Middleton, head of the Water Pollution Control Authority, states in his review, and I quote, "Because this is a sewer lateral and not a sewer main, there is a greater risk for need for repairs to the line in the future. The concern would be construction of a fence, or planting of trees, or a privacy hedge, which would make any repairs to the line an issue," and quote. "To address this issue, I suggest that you add another stipulation to the list, that the D of both lots two and three, where the eastern exists, specifically mentions the ten-foot wide sewer eastern on their property, and states that nothing be planted or placed in that ten-foot area. Much to our chagrin, the developer has not proposed to tie into the fairly due gas line on Oakwood Avenue. Is it because of the cost of digging a trench? Or is he planning to go all-electric? Because there is electric service to the house, obviously for lighting. Both of those options seem much safer for the neighborhood than the previous proposed propane tanks. Perhaps this Fetis can explain what is actually proposed for heating and cooking. If it is still propane tanks, I say, buyer beware. Of course, the prospective buyer should be made aware of this, and I hope that they do do that before they sign on the line. Work on the vacant wooded lot that the neighborhood considered open space, until now, was started last November with the selling of trees, piling of debris, and digging up large amounts of stone. Three loads of lumber were trucked away off the property, but many, many felled trees, and today I counted at least a hundred and fifty trees, felled trees, are still lying on the property, as does piles of debris, and lots to lots to lots to lots of stones, rocks. Even after a large pit was filled with rocks on lot one, no work was done during the winter, the excavator was removed from the property this spring, and the neighborhood is left with a mess and an ice lift. We look forward to Mr. Fetis's explanation to why there are no driveway tie-ins that appear to be, anyway, when I look at those certificates, and what is proposed for heating and cooking on these lots. Finally, we encourage you to embrace all the recommended stipulations, as possibly amended, and add the three that I have suggested concerning the auto cab drawings, D restrictions on lots two and three, and requiring the driveways to be connected to the galleys, if that be necessary, or if I'm not reading it correctly, then it's my error. Hopefully, Mr. Hall will avoid cookie cutter houses proposed of the 2020 and 2021 plans, and add to our neighborhood houses that are more in character with what exists in our neighborhood. Thank you for your attention. I am going to give, I would like my comments added to the record, and I'm going to give each of you a copy of my, my comments for your consideration."
Great, thank you. Yes, please.
I'll try to push it in further this time. I put it back. So, to address the trench drains, there's a note located right below the right-of-way here, says proposed trench drains, trench drain to collect stormwater from driveway to be piped to gallery, or galley. So that's located right here, and the same note is duplicated on every driveway, and then there's a dashed line from the trench drain to the galley. Hold up, because it's gone over here. No, this one's going into here. Uh, no, this one's going into here. Yeah. Okay. Uh, I guess as for the heat, I did not discuss that with my client, so I'm not sure that's a relevant subdivision question. If I had the answer, I would, I would give it, but I, I don't. So electric, you know, there's advances in the electric heat pump systems now. I don't, I don't know, to be honest with you. I could find out, I could make a stipulation that I tell you what the heat is, but if that's necessary. I think those were probably the only two things I needed to address.
Autocad drawing?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that was on previous. I think it's still on our, it's still on there for model. It's a requirement, or we got to pay someone else to digitize, so yes.
Okay. That?
Yeah, the autocad drawings, I believe that was already done last time. Um, it was provided by Mr. Fettis when the plans were on the way to being recorded, and the boundaries of the subdivision haven't changed. So the point of that is just so we can give it to the, um, consultants who update the town assessors, the tax assessors' maps, just so we can have the new boundaries, um, for GIS in the tax map.
Okay.
Um, as last time, the, the application conforms to the subdivision regs and the zoning regulations here. Um, there are some changes to the stipulations from last time, and a lot of that's just based on the comments we received, um, where last time this was reviewed by our engineering consultant, this time it's reviewed by our town engineer, who had a slightly different take on it, wanted a little bit more information about, um, making sure that the stormwater, you know, won't overflow into the street of the neighbors' homes, who just wanted some more verification on that. Um, and WPCA director did have some comments where he wanted to review the final placement of the easement and the easement language for that sewer line going to the property and back. Um, he seemed a bit concerned with the placement of the sewer line within the easement. He preferred it to be in the middle of the easement, um, but that detail can be, can be worked out. Um, a stipulation could say that the deeds of both lots two and three mention the sewer easement. I think deeds would usually do that, but there's no harm in, uh...
What was the next question? We can request that?
Yeah, the other could be.
It makes sense to me. It's a sewer line.
Right.
As well as the restriction...
I think the easement language is standard, so I think it's a very good point that, that Carleen brought up. I, I think that it's, it's handled in the sewer easement language. There's stipulations that you can't put a permanent structure, and you can't make modifications within the easement. So, so the town has ample, uh, enforcement language in the deed, uh, in that reserved easement that's recorded on the land records. So I, I don't think there's any harm in restating it.
Okay.
Unless we contradict something that's in the regulations.
Yeah.
And then we, then we got to do, because I, I think you raise a valid point, but I think the protection already exists. So.
Yeah, and that's why I wouldn't want to be too specific in a stipulation, just have a general referral to it.
Exactly.
Because they'll have tons of detail about what you can and can't do.
Any other questions, though?
Um, this, this is a CAM application also, and we didn't receive DEP comments this time, but we, there's nothing different from their original comments, in which they, they didn't really have any issue with this. Um, there really aren't any sidewalks anywhere in this area, and it's a very low-traffic dead-end street here. Um, just to go over the recommended stipulations. Number one is just the "be in lieu of open space" language. Um, and by the way, the recommendation for the "be in lieu of open space" was granted again by the Conservation Commission this time around. Um, number two is the erosion and sedimentation control bond. Um, number three, the final location language of the sewer easin shall be subject to WPCA review and recorded prior to or concurrent with the subdivision plans. Uh, number four, as-built plans for the relocated sewer line shall be provided to the town prior to issuance of a zoning permit for construction of lot three. Number five, larger trees in the area between lots one and two shall be retained. Number six, final plan shall be modified to achieve no net increase in stormwater to the town right-of-way and our neighboring properties as determined by the town engineer. Number seven, boundary markers shall be established and verified as installed on the final plans prior to filing on the town's land evidence records. And number eight would be, um, deeds of lots two and three shall specifically reference the sewer easin.
We're not in a position to say that you have to hook up to the gas, are we?
No, it's really not a, something we regulate. Um, you know, the building official, when the time comes, will make sure that what they're doing meets all codes.
Quick, I wonder, Mr. Chairman, do you have information?
Yes, sir.
They just got the autocad. Is, is the plan that, uh, we bought at the town hall, the very latest plan, the one that he was reviewing tonight, is that the one that's on autocad?
It is, because it really just, it really is just about the lot boundaries. So if certain little things change in the plan, it really wouldn't affect that.
I, I'm just, do this concern that the three things don't have a connection?
Right, and that, um, that autocad clause, it's really just, um...
It's not, uh, pictures of all four of the plants, all four of the bike sections represented tonight?
No, it's really just for the lot boundaries. It's really the only purpose of it.
It doesn't have the details of the construction.
Right, right.
All right, I would not wear it. Thank you.
Because, yeah, the final plans will be recorded, but the town clerk and that would have all the details on it.
And the engineer would have to tie it off on that.
Right.
So.
Yes. And, uh, ma'am, were you moving to, uh, how many?
Hey, I think he's talking to you. Hey, he's talking to you. He wants to, he wants to say something.
You bring the mic.
He's going to bring the mic to you, babe.
What?
Sit down, he's bringing me the mic.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
I'll just be brief, but, um, my name's Catherine Perrone. I live at twelve Oakwood Avenue, across the street from the projected, uh, proposed project. Um, I could not see the houses that were, um, because everything was to our back, but, um, I think the speaker, the presenter, said that there was going to be three houses all the same. That is not compatible with our neighborhood. My husband and I bought our home in nineteen sixty-two. The house, we live, it's the house, the street is a dead-end street, and, um, it's a neighborhood, quiet, and every house on the street is different. So three houses on a one-point-three-acre lot, all the same, is not compatible with what we now live in, live have. Um, it's been a nice neighborhood to live in. We've enjoyed it, and, um, we hope we can continue to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You all wrapped up, Keith? Three votes.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's true, it would be, it would, if they could be, have a different design to them. It's not something we regulate, where the commission of the town doesn't, uh, view the design of, of single-family houses.
It makes sense to shuffle it up.
I think what the applicants, or what the advocates engineer said was, for the purposes of the plan, he showed three typical houses. I don't think it means that the developer is going to build three exact, we, we have no control of that. I mean, there is no architectural review over that, but, uh, I think what you said was that, that the subdivision plan shows three buildable squares, exactly the same, right? That doesn't necessarily mean that the ultimate houses are going to conform to that exact square or that exact size. They have to conform to zoning, and they're whatever the owners want to build to comply with zoning.
Of course, of course, and I can't add color or twist to, you know, roofline or something like that, but I will bring back the message, uh, to the developer slash owner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know his intention also, but he might just sell them off as buildable lots to three individual people who might build their own houses.
So Keith, it's, the application requires a waiver approval. These are separate, separate?
Right.
A waiver approval, a co-letter management application approval, and a subdivision application approval.
Right.
Three separate motions.
Yeah, and the, um, the waivers require a supermajority, four out of five vote.
Correct. And that's just for the sidewalks, correct?
Yeah, that was the only one.
The motion is closed, meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting closed. How would like, people like to proceed with their votes?
I'm going to start with the first one on the sidewalks. I have a motion to approve the waiver for the sidewalk that's articulated by Charles.
Any other second?
I'll try to make a motion to approve, uh, the waiver on the sidewalk with, uh, Charles David.
I'll take them. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five. All five in favor? Yes, sir. They go supermajority. Number two, the CAM application.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the CAM application for the subdivision.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any discussion? The move. The last rule. The subdivision. Yes, you can.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the subdivision subject to the eight stipulations, uh, seven which are contained in the report, and the one additional stipulation, uh, that, that Keith just mentioned with regard to, uh, the deeds on two lots, uh, stipulating that the sanitary sewer easements, or the lots are subject to restrictions under the sanitary sewer easin.
Lots two and three.
Correct.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move. The move. Thank you. Go top, stand this time. We're closing the meeting.
Go to the top. Go to the top. Go to the top.
Meeting closed, and adjourned. Thank you.